Good afternoon and welcome to our last meeting of June. Appreciate those of you who are watching this on our Electric City Television. Our invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Matt Harbin. Respects to the flag will be given by Councilmember Steve Curvin. Please rise.
Let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to live in a free country. And I pray for our military tonight in harm's way protecting that freedom. And I'm thankful for our right to vote. And I encourage all of our citizens, and I pray that our citizens will vote tomorrow in the runoff. I pray for our police and our fire and our other city employees. And help them make good, sound decisions to improve our city. I pray for our citizens as we enter the summer months and the summer season to make good decisions and stamp out violence in our city. And I pray for our council and our management as we make decisions tonight that would be in the best interest of our city. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of June the 9th have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve? First by Mayor Protem, second by Mr. Roberts. All of those in favor say aye. Opposed, the minutes of June 9th passed unanimously. We've got four items of old business, and our first item is request second and third reading of ordinance 14-08 adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2014-2015. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and Council, just a few comments. Obviously, you gave first reading to this matter on June the 9th. Since that time, there have been no comments from the council nor the public. So we're certainly recommending second and third reading. But just for everybody, and again, a summary, this whole budget approach is to try to come up with an approach that is, will make this city sustainable for the future. It will help us continue the high quality of services that the citizens are accustomed to. It should help keep and retract qualified, dedicated employees. One of the main things this budget does that has not been done in a long time is we'll help establish a capital replacement fund for police cars, fire trucks, sanitation, and all your buildings. But the important building blocks around this budget were to try to look at a new, more equitable way to fund city services, and that was to look at enterprise funds in as many cases as possible where those services such as the cemetery pay for their way. So I say all that, so we would recommend on second reading that you, a second and third, that you pass this budget, fifty-two million, ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. It does include a seven mil rollback in taxes. It includes a franchise fee increase for Piedmont Natural Gas and Duke, sewer rate increase of fifteen percent, stormwater rate increase of fifty cents per unit, and then the sanitation slash capital fee of five dollars per month.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments, questions from council?
Just like to say that, you know, we'll be voting against this again due to my opposition of the five dollar capital fee per month.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have one.
Mr. Chapman?
I mean, I've had several constituents call me in regard to it, and they certainly agree that we need to have improvement on our, on our trash trucks and certainly our aging police cars and fire trucks, but mostly in the, in the trash trucks. And, you know, they've, they've actually, some of them have actually said that they would, you know, like to even see us put more towards that to replace them because the longer we wait, the bigger the bill is going to get when we get to the replacement. So it's just more of a comment.
Good point.
I make a motion, Mayor, to approve this on second reading.
First by Mr. Harbin, second by Mr. Roberts. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes. I was going to say it passes unanimously, but no, it does not. It passes eight-one on the second reading. Sorry.
I hope that this budget be adopted on the third final reading.
First by Mr. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes eight-one on the third and final reading. Moving right along, we have a couple of requests here that involve the budget. The second one is the request second and third reading of ordinance 14-09 amending the Piedmont Natural Gas franchise agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You got my first line. This does tie back, and the next item will tie directly back to the budgets. What you have is this is an ordinance, and this particular one is for Piedmont Natural Gas. We are recommending second and third reading. What it will do is raise the franchise fee from three to five percent. Also, in Piedmont's case, it extends their franchise agreement for ten years. We'll take it through 2024. And again, we recommend this to fit this budget picture. We have talked to our Duke, excuse me, our Piedmont representative, Hank McCullough. He and his staff are ready should you pass this tonight, so ready to move to make sure this budget is implemented as we promised. So we'd recommend this on second, third reading.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Make a motion, we approve it on second reading?
First by Mr. Stewart. Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion, we approve it on third?
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Rolling right into the next one, which is the request second and third reading of ordinance 14-10 amending the Duke Energy franchise agreement. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this does tie back to the budget. You gave first reading on June the 9th along with the budget ordinance and Piedmont Natural Gas. This will raise the Duke Energy's franchise fee from three to fi- four percent. We have in constant contact with Scott Miller, your representative, and he and his staff are ready should you pass this tonight to implement it. So we'd recommend it to you on second, third reading.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Make a motion, we approve it on second reading?
First by Mayor Protem.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously on the second reading. A.B. Roberts, that's what I need to start doing.
Make a motion, we approve it on third and final reading?
First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Our last item of old business is request second and third reading of ordinance 14-11 to annex and zone to G.C. General Commercial, 1.72 acres and the 600 blocks of Highway 28 bypass. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and Council, again, you gave first reading of this ordinance on June the 9th. We are requesting second and third reading tonight. It is a Bojangles, so we disclosed that last time, and it's part of that complex out with Walmart and Zaxby's and Aaron's, and so most of the properties around that on 28 are already in the city, and they've requested being, and we'd recommend this to you on the second and third reading.
Thank you.
Is there approval of this on first, on second reading?
First by Dr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Lockridge. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion, we approve it on third and final reading?
First by Mr. Harbin. Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Jumping right into new business, we have four items, and the first item is request consideration of a referral to the planning commission, a petition to rezone 431 Williamson Road and 718 North Gossett Street from Light Industrial to multifamily, RM10 multifamily residential.
Mr. Mayor, that's in my seat, so I make a recommendation, we pass it on to the planning.
First by Mr. Roberts, A.B. Roberts, second by Dr. Don Chapman. Mr. Chapman, architect. All those in favor say aye. We'll pass this on to the planning commission. Our next item is request consideration of a contract for roof improvement to Fire Station One. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Ted Merle, who's over all of our facilities and building, and also Jeff Martin, who is a consultant with us on not only this roof but several other roofs. And I'll try to keep this simple. They can answer the technical questions. But in the way of background, the city, the fire chief and his staff did the best they could and, and without technical assistance, got three quotes to re-roof the main fire station, to take off the roof, put a new one on, and that was done, and it obviously was not satisfactory. We asked Ted, this was about the time Ted was taking over the duties, and he recommended Jeff, who we found to be really good on a lot of projects, come in and take a look what was going on. And probably had we had these people in place earlier, we'd expect sloped, slope on that roof, a different type of work around the HVAC systems and, and the whole drainage around the edge. That wasn't done, it has been done now with the assistance of Ted and Jeff. They also have gone against the warranties, but the bottom line is, we're going to go back and do the roof. We're recommending that we go back, spend this thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-six cents to do the roof the way it probably should have been the first time. And again, I've sort of given you the brief things. Positive slope to all the roof drains, new support rails under the HVAC system units, new wall coping on the roof are all added to this scope. The original company, Turnkey Roofing, is making good on their twenty-eight thousand five hundred. They will come back and install it under Jeff's supervision. The roofing material company could not guarantee the material because the workmanship was not done, but they, it is the same roofing material again to be installed under Jeff and Ted's supervision. It will have, when it's done, a twenty-year watertight warranty. So again, if we'd done it this way the first time, we'd have probably spent in the neighborhood of this fifty-eight thousand, which we'll have in the roof once it's done, and hopefully will be done for twenty years. So again, I, we would recommend you award this contract to, as we presented, to Turnkey Roofing under the direction of Ted and Jeff, and they can answer any of the technical questions you might have.
Good, thank you. Again, appreciate the recap, Ted and Jeff there, and Mr. Mayor Protem.
So the original company installed the roof for twenty-eight thousand dollars, and they're going to come back in and reinstall, they're going to make good on their price?
Yes, sir.
And reinstall it again and not charge us anything?
Correct.
So, so the twenty-six thousand dollars, where's that coming?
That is that tapered. The original roof is turnkey installed, it was just flat, and the additional twenty-six thousand is to add tapered insulation to basically make it drain. What's up there now is flat, we're holding water, and because it's holding so much water, the roof manufacturer would not issue the guarantee. So the additional twenty-six, nine thirty-six is to add additional insulation, what we call tapered insulation, to actually create slope so that the roof will drain properly, not hold water and thereby get us into the, back into the realm of obtaining a twenty-year warranty.
So the twenty-eight thousand dollars, that, I guess Turnkey is saying that they're going to make good on that's labor, their labor and the material for the new roof?
The material being the, the flat membrane, the flashings and whatnot, yes, sir, they're going to tear that off and replace that at their.
And remove the gravel, right?
And remove the gravel at their, at their expense.
And, and you're going to be supervising this work?
Yes, sir.
Now, what is your fees? I don't see that in here to, since you're our consultant, what are you charging the city to supervise this work?
I've told Mr. Ted it'd probably be in the range of, in the fifteen hundred to two-thousand dollar range.
So is that in this contract anywhere?
No, we have a separate contract with Jeff that falls under my authority. All the work Jeff's done to get us to this point, we've paid him four hundred and fifty dollars, which is more than reasonable, and we think this expense, and especially for his expertise, is, he's helping us on some other roofs too, which we'll talk about later.
Mr. Roberts? And then Mr. Chapman?
We got a problem and we need to fix it. A leaking roof is not a good thing to have in any building. So regardless of what we doing here, and I agree, it needs to be tapered roof.
And we do have fifteen hundred dollar contingency fee in this quote that would cover his expenses.
It should have been tapered roof in the beginning, but it wasn't, so.
Mr. Chapman and Mr. Curvin?
I have a couple of questions. I guess, was there any damage from the, to the interior that resulted from the, was it leaking or was it just holding water?
It was, they have had a few leaks, and I'll have to ask Chief Horn, I don't believe we've had any severe damage yet.
We have some acoustic ceiling tile, right? Just a few pieces of acoustic ceilings off the damage we've had.
Okay. And then the second one was, I guess, I find it a little hard to believe that, that the roofing contractor wouldn't have stopped and said, this isn't being installed, we're not, we wouldn't be able to install it according to manufacturer specifications, even if they didn't have the specifications to begin with. And so I questioned that a little bit, but then the last, I guess, it's more of a question with the, if we're, if we're increasing the tapered insulation or the foam, that, that will add our value, which will add efficiency to the building, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And what is that thickness that?
They're starting out with a minimum of one inch, and it goes up from there. We already have an existing roof on it, but if I'm not mistaken, at our ridge line, when we add the tapered slope, we're going to be about five to six inches at our ridge line of polyester sign rate, which an inch is a little, little less than a six, R6, about a R5.9, so at our center, we're going to be twenty-four to twenty-five R-value. A little less on our edges at the drain line.
And are we replacing the coping?
Yes, sir.
So it's all new?
Yes, sir.
And, and Turnkey is doing all the, all the work?
That's correct.
Under your supervision?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Curvin?
We had to add electrical work because as we add slope to the insulation, one of the air conditioning units, the conduit, has to be disassembled. It did not happen before, because in other words, when we create slope, that connection would theoretically be buried, so we have, we have a little bit of eighteen hundred dollars to have him to disconnect that and reconnect that particular air conditioning unit. Because of the additional slope, we had to move it up, what we call uphill a little bit.
And the roof curves will also, they had to take off the disconnects to install the roof curves and then replace the roof disconnects to the air conditioning.
I guess I have one last question on state. Are they adding markup to their additional work?
No, sir. They, they're doing the base at their cost. They gave us a price of twenty-six, nine thirty-six. I verified that through two independent suppliers to double check that number, but they're not adding any, there's no overhead of profit that they've added to the twenty-six, nine thirty-six.
All right, thank you.
Oh, you know, I have an old saying, I, I take credit for making it up, and it is that I might not be fast, but I'm slow. If you think about that a little bit, you'll figure out what it means, but I don't understand why we're going to go back to the same people that did such a poor job. The manufacturer said they wouldn't honor their warranty because the quality of work, of the workmanship was so bad by the roofing contractor. And now we're going to go back to the same contractor and pay him more money to supposedly this time do it right. I just have a low level of confidence in the outcome by that approach.
Well, let me say this, he's, the additional money is for the additional tapered insulation, which was not included in the beginning and nor was expected in the beginning. So there were some issues in workmanship. Turnkey ended up subbing this work, this phase of the work out. We had a couple of meetings on the site. They've agreed that it wasn't up to par, and they've agreed to tear off the roof and put back what they had originally priced for, at no cost to the city. So what, what we're paying additionally is actually for additional material solely in the facet of adding created slope.
Well, I understand all that.
Yes.
I'm just saying that.
Well, let me, let me answer that one for.
First of all, if they had a roof to put on and it was a manufactured, it was a manufactured product, which it was apparently, well, to me, they, they were totally wrong in proceeding, as Mr. Chapman, I think, alluded to, without finding out what the, the factory specifications were. And by doing that, they caused all this problem. Now, I don't know these people, I don't know who they are or anything about them, but I, I, it sounds to me, from what I do know, that they don't do good work, and therefore, I don't know why we would consider dealing with them again. Now, maybe I'm missing something.
Jeff, let me take you out of this line of fire here. Somebody else needs to.
Well, I wasn't dragging him, I was just putting a question out there.
We probably, it is, it is a fair question, and probably.
It is a fair question. I, I think we go back to, if we go to another contractor in this scenario, now we're going to have to pay that other contractor the original, or a good portion of the original balance to remove the roof and put that back. Turnkey has agreed to, what we have up there is one layer of insulation and the membrane and flashings. All that has to come off to start over. So they've agreed to take all that off and put that portion back at their cost.
I understand all that.
And I.
I'm just saying, why, why do you think they're going to do it right this time when they didn't do it right the first time?
Supervision?
That's going to be a big part of it, yes, sir.
I thought my bigger point is that, and this, you don't have anything to do with this, but I get tired of our paying supposedly competent, professional people to do work for us, and we've got a lot of examples of this I could go through, and you know what they are. And then they don't do a good job and there's no accountability. They don't get held to the account for what they didn't do that they were supposed to. It's just like, oh, well, this is government money, it doesn't matter. And I mean, I'm sorry, I think it does matter.
Mr. Roberts?
Jeff, the biggest thing I think is going to happen the second go-around, you're going to be there making sure.
That's correct, yes, sir.
That this is put on correctly.
And we won't cut no checks until he approves what's installed.
That's correct.
I got faith in you.
Well, I appreciate that.
And, and I think you would be there, if you're going to be right there watching them and making sure this is put back on correctly, I think we, regardless of who's putting it on.
Well, I will say this, I have worked with them on a couple of other projects, and they were very, once, once I did the survey, Mr. Merle and I met with, met with them, they admitted that they did a poor job, they actually were busy at the time and subbed it out to the subcontractor. They admitted that it was their screw-up, and they said they were willing to go back and put it, you know, bear the burden of putting it back. Our thing was if we're going to do it the second time, we need to add the tapered insulation to actually make it, make it the proper way. So, and I agree with what you're saying, I guess it's a flip of, if we bring in someone else, then we're going to cost a lot more money.
Dr. Thompson?
Well, listen to this, and you know, this is really, because I'm in a building with flat roof, and I know the problems that flat roof causes. So I cannot imagine anyone would build a new building now and think that the best roof to put on would be a flat roof, because it has all kind of problems. What I don't quite understand is what does the city end up having to pay? I mean, there are a lot of figures being thrown around, so what is it that we would be paying this contractor to get this job corrected?
Twenty-six. Well, it would be the additional, around thirty thousand, two ninety-nine.
The city, I mean.
Yes, ma'am. That would be the city's, of course. We had a contingency fee of fifteen hundred dollars in case we found something minor, but somewhere from thirty thousand, two ninety-nine, less, possibly up to fifteen hundred dollars.
And that's for the new insulation, Dr. Thompson, that they're putting under there? Not necessarily paying the contractor, but for the additional material, is that correct?
That's correct. And, and by doing that, I just want to reiterate, that's going to add to the insulation value of the roof.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Which should have less gain on the building, which should save in the long run with the heating and air.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And if you put slope to it, which is, definitely needs to be done.
Mr. Harbin, then Mr. Lockridge?
I would agree with Mr. Curvin, you know, and I think sometimes it, sort of, the low bidders sometimes may not do the job that we actually sometimes really want, and I appreciate, you know, the work y'all have done in trying to get it done, and, you know, not to say Turnkey, you know, obviously has admitted that they've done a, a poor job and has, you know, stepped up to the plate to, you know, make, try to make their part right. But, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Well, first by Mr. Harbin. We'll get that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. Lockridge, I thought I couldn't catch your voice, Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion?
One question. You said there's a twenty-year watertight warranty. Who covers that?
That is by a company called Versico, who is a membrane, the roofing materials manufacturer.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So it's not the company that's installing it?
That's correct. You'll have a two-year workmanship warranty from the contractor, in other words, Turnkey, but we'll have a twenty-year total system warranty from Versico, which is part of the Carlisle Centec group.
So if we get any leaks?
We have a 1-800 number to call directly to Versico, and they will send out either someone from Turnkey or another certified contractor to take care of those leaks.
Further discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We have an eight-one vote. Mr. Curvin dissenting. Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, counsel.
Our third item is request consideration to purchase a vehicle by the police department. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Chief Stewart is here. You can step up if you got any questions, you can also stay up there for the next item. But again, trying to maintain the proper inventory of police vehicles. We have had a couple of wrecks, and then we have some that need to be traded in, so we've combined insurance payments, trade-ins, and some additional funds from our DEA account to add one more vehicle to the fleet. It is a 2014 Dodge Charger from Butler Dodge, who has a state contract, twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, so we're asking you to award that contract to Butler Dodge at twenty-two thousand five hundred on your procurement regulations, which allow you to use the state contract.
Thank you. Any questions, comments directed to Mr. Moore or the chief?
I just like to ask chief about that warranty. What kind of warranty we going to have on this vehicle?
That's a three-year, thirty-six thousand mile warranty, or the, the main parts, power train warranty is five years or a hundred thousand miles.
Anything else?
I just have one reading.
Mr. Chapman?
Relating to the warranty, because we have several chargers now, we're, we're getting good service out of them?
Yes, sir. We've had chargers now since 2008. That was the one that we were awarded through DPS, and that vehicle's still on the road, no issues.
Excellent.
Mr. Lockridge?
It has nothing to do, how many miles does that 2008 have on?
I believe it's getting close to right at a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, okay. I'll make a motion if we have, we have done this.
First by Mr. Lockridge, second by Dr. Thompson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Passed unanimously, thank you, chief. Our next item is request consideration to purchase a vehicle for the police department. Mr. Moore?
Again, Mr. Mayor and Council, this, this request is to award the contract for Kawasaki Mule forty-ten, four-by-four, from Anderson Motorsports, which is a local vendor. If you'll think back, and as, as chief said in his background, in November, in trying to enhance the downtown, you approved two additional police officers, and we mentioned at that time, we would need some kind of specialty vehicle. Now, they still have access to patrol cars, but as they work special events and all, and the chief and his staff looked at what other departments were doing, what our needs were, and priced out three of these utility vehicles. And then I'm not going into all the details, but he's giving you the three they looked at. This was not quite the cheapest price, but met all the specs they were looking for, so what we're asking tonight is, it's the kind of the middle price, to you authorize him to purchase the Kawasaki Mule forty-ten from Anderson Motorsports at a cost of thirteen thousand, eighteen dollars and fifty-six cents. He will also use an additional thousand dollars to outfit this with blue lights and decals, so it'd be clear that it is a police vehicle.
Thank you, any questions, Mr. Moore, the chief?
Mr. Kawasaki Mule?
It is a little bit more than a golf cart, Dr. Thompson, it's a four-seater, it's more like a utility vehicle, and not only the fact we went a little further in preparation maybe with the council's headed, we asked for the four-wheel-drive vehicle in regards, so if we start the parks, or the rails to trail, or the parkland trails, that we would have a vehicle that would be equipped to get us into those areas too.
What's gonna happen with the golf cart?
The existing golf cart we have, it could be here today, or it could be gone tomorrow, we've had that since two thousand six. It is needing a few repairs right now, but it is aged.
I just didn't know something the rec department might could use, since we got the big multi-complex down there to go from field to field, you know, so.
The difference in the two vehicles, Councilman, is this vehicle would be gas-operated, we have had issues in the past with the golf cart we have now, because you do have the voltage meter on it, but it could die and leave you stranded. With this being a gas-powered vehicle, it'd be, as far as law enforcement and public safety, it'd be more efficient for us.
In other words, you, you still need that vehicle down?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
The, the golf cart down?
Block parties and other events that are going on.
Anything else, guys?
This, this thing's a whole lot more than a golf cart.
Yes, sir, it's a four-seater, like I said, it's four-wheel-drive, it can get us down into the trails when we start that, and also it has a pickup on the back, so we could get the columns down there for downtown sounds.
Yeah, it's a whole lot more durable than a golf cart.
And if you had an emergency situation, you could handle somebody with that.
Make a motion that we approve it?
First by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Mr. A.B. Roberts. Discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Passed unanimously, thank you, chief. Move right into administrative briefing.
The only thing we have for you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and I hope we hadn't left anything off, but is the calendar for the end of this month, and then on into next month, and I'll let you look at that at your leisure. We do have some items that are outlined on the agenda for executive session. I asked the mayor, since we have a, a number of people who'll be participating, it might get a little crowded in the back room, and that we'll ask our audience if they would move to the lobby, and then we'll call folks in as, as we get there. But we would like to move the legal advice on the litigations, we do have a couple of our labor attorneys here, we'd like to move the riddle case first, if we could, so those guys can brief you on that, and then they can move on, and then we'll do the property, and then the mediation on the rec center, it'll be okay.
That works for me. I entertain the motion to go to executive session. Before we go into executive session, Mr. Stewart?
I'd just like to say, this is my last meeting as serving as Mayor Pro Tem, and just like to enjoy my time as serving as Mayor Pro Tem the past year, and look forward to the next person in line, assuming those duties.
Thank you. Good comment. Hope I didn't work you too hard.
You should've gotten an email today.
I got a full calendar this week, so I think you saved it this week, I think.
Thank you, Councilman Stewart, you should've gotten some from Rachel today. Since all of you are already sworn in, you don't have to be sworn back in officially on July one, that oath is good, but we would like, as we, been the tradition of the city, on July the fourteenth, you'll vote for your Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Lockridge is the next in line to be considered, he has said he would be happy to serve. And then if you'd like to bring your family, we'll have the swearing-in, just let Rachel know for the public at the next meeting, July fourteenth, okay?
Okay, thanks.
I'd just like to remind the citizens about the runoff elections tomorrow, don't forget to vote.
That is important, exercise your right. I entertain the motion to go to executive session. First by Mr. A.B. Roberts, second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? We stay in executive session.
Make a motion we come out of executive session?
First by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Mr. Lockridge, all those in favor say aye? Opposed? We stay in our executive session, and executive session, first item, we heard legal advice on Riddle versus the City of Anderson, and instructed our attorneys to continue with that litigation. We also heard contractual matter in regards to possible property acquisition within the city. And we've also instructed the city attorney to continue in those contractual matters and report back to us on, on any progress. And last but not least, we heard from the city attorney, again, the mediation in regards to our recreation center. No action will be taken tonight.
Make a motion we adjourn?
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. A.B. Roberts. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? We stay on adjourned.